Discussion and conversation regarding the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Canby, Canby Fire, and Clackamas County regarding the community service fee for the strategic investment zone that coincides with Columbia Distributing. So, welcome. We have our council, and then we've got a group coming in from what appears to be the Fire District to tune in and check it out. Jamie, I believe Jamie and Joe are going to walk us through what the conversation is about, where we're at, and then at the end, we'll have our, some discussion, and then move forward with some sort of a consensus to, on the matter. So, Jamie and Joe, take it away, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight's work session is to discuss the community service fee distribution from Columbia Distributing's strategic investment zone. As you will recall, once the strategic investment zone was approved at the May 22 Oregon Business Development Commission meeting, the special taxing districts have 90 days to determine and agree to the distribution schedule. The community service fee is intended to mitigate direct impacts of the development on the community that are over and above the system's development charges collected. On June 23, the city hosted a community service fee meeting. All of the special taxing districts were invited to that meeting, and in attendance were the City of Canby, Clackamas County, Canby Fire, Canby School District, and Clackamas Community College. At the meeting, representatives from the education districts determined that they would forego their, their portion of the community service fee. Clackamas County held a follow-up meeting on July 16, and at that meeting, representatives from Clackamas County, City of Canby, and Canby Fire met to further discuss options for a distribution schedule. The consent, the consensus between all three parties was around a preferred option. The preferred option was that the three entities would receive their standard distribution, and then split the waived education and port fees in thirds. Furthermore, the county agreed to share their third of their, the education and port total, with 25% going to Canby Fire, 25% to the city, and the remaining 50% to stay with Clackamas County. The Board of County Commissioners approved the preferred option at their business meeting on July 28, and it will go back before the board for a policy session on consent agenda tomorrow, August 20. Business Oregon, the state's economic development department has indicated that if the special taxing districts do not agree, the Oregon Business Development Commission will choose the standardized distribution, which would mean their portion, I'm sorry, which would mean the portion waived by the Canby School District and Clackamas County Community College would be put back to them, and, and we would lose that funding. And, so that is all I had as far as background, but I would open it up for any questions or dialogue.
Can we talk to Sean Varwig again?
Yeah.
Sorry, I have a visitor.
We have Sean Varwig attending, which is perfect.
Welcome, Councilor Varwig.
Hello. Thank you. Sorry for being a little bit late.
So, Jamie just completed kind of the update regarding this, the community fee breakdown and whatnot, and I know there's been quite a bit of dialogue with, between you and city staff, and as well as the Fire District as well, so do you have any comments or questions or anything as we get into this? Councilor Varwig, anything?
No, nothing from me. Sorry.
Okay. So, Council Parker, Council President Dale, Council Spoon, questions for Jamie on, on this piece and where we're at? Are we...
Is there more to the staff report? I can wait until we're, we're through.
Um, no, the only addition to the staff report would be the information that Amanda had included in your packet, which was the information from the, that went to the Board of County Commissioners. And so that went over the, the totals, the percentage to, of, of the community service fee to be distributed, and I would gladly go over those totals if you would prefer.
And how does the Canby Fire District feel about this?
Thank you, Greg. That was my question to you after all the discussion. You're muted, Chief.
There you go.
Thank you. First of all, we're very appreciative of the process with the county and the city. We appreciate the process. In the process of the negotiations that we had, the Fire District had tried to get the city in our negotiations in those sessions to increase the amount for the Fire District. Our current amount is $25,000 a year, and in, when we were talking with the education side of the school district and the college, during their process, they made it real clear that they would prefer to have some of those funds go over to Public Safety, i.e. the Fire Department, which some of those funds did go over, but the fact is, is the city is actually receiving a substantially more amount, a higher amount, and the Fire District is expected to service that. And I springboard off of that, and in your, my, our request tonight is, in listening to your discussion, when you approved the size that night, there seemed to be some interest of some of the council members to actually do your very best to support the Fire District with the loss of revenue. And so that's why we're here tonight, is I had sent information to Amanda to, forward to you, and I believe to some of the councilors, requesting that we split the amount between, if you add up the Fire District and the city amount, and split that 50/50, both the city gets 35,000, 30, close to 36,000, the Fire District gets 30, 35,000, so we, we increase by $10,000, which to me seems fair in the fact that both of us, the city and the Fire District, have to service Columbia Distribution. And those figures were actually ran by the County Assessors Office by splitting it that way, so we've got accurate figures. And also in the staff report from the county, which was left out, is that they did say that there was this issue between the city and the Fire District to try to work this out, because we don't, we do not want that going down to the state, and we're willing to accept the current amount with the staff recommendation, but I'm going back to what the city council had said, some of the city councilors had said that night, in regards to doing the best that you could in regards to supporting the Fire District. Sarah?
Sorry, one of these days I'll learn how to unmute. So, when I was looking at the distribution, I agree, and it's really important to me personally that we make the Fire District whole, because you service Columbia Distributing regardless of any other, it doesn't matter how many taxes they pay, you service them the same, and it's really important to me that you guys are made whole. So, when you say splitting the city's amount, does that include, because when I looked at the, the distribution, it included the City of Canby and then Canby's URA also? So, are you talking about just the City of Canby distribution, or are you also talking about if you combine the URA, the city URA, and the City of Canby, splitting all of that? Just so I know what you're asking for. Does that make sense? Does my question make sense, Chief?
Ah, yes, it does, and that does include the city URA in the amount that the county ran, which was 35,606, and it also, and then the Fire District is 35,593, and Lynn ran those numbers at the County Assessors Office, but that doesn't include the URA.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about all the figures and not just some of them, because I want to make sure you're made whole, for me personally. Yeah.
Council President Dale?
Uh, yeah, I was the, probably the most vocal one about it that night, so I'll speak up to it. Yes, very interested in helping the Fire District out on this one. I, I do know that for 21 years, there has been some tension about the URA and diversion of funds, and we have worked through a lot of that over the years between the city and the Fire District. I, I think the city also has a lot of incentive to help the Fire District staffen, especially with the North Side Fire Station coming on, and anything we can do to help that is good. The city, we have needs, obviously, that Columbia will put on us. We are arguably the biggest loser as well on the tax abatement of it, but I'm very much interested in helping Canby Fire out on this as much as we can, and we have an opportunity to do it. The county did a good job on their spreadsheet in that it agreed with mine, so I said that to see if Greg would just shake his head at me. I ran a whole bunch of scenarios regarding the chief's ask. We're talking about really very modest donations, so to speak, from the city to bring the Fire District up to even a 33% share, to get to the chief's ask of an equal split between the city and Canby Fire. It is indeed just over $10,000, as he mentioned, getting them whole to where they have zero offset is a bigger donation, it's 17,700. What I would like my fellow members on the council to consider is this, that getting the chief to equality with the city would not even require all of the unexpected bonus from the education and the port of Portland. That is 14,600 to get to the city, and the Fire District being at parity, we would only donate 10,000 of that. So, I would ask you to consider that it's a donation out of a bonus, a large S, if you please, might be an overstatement, but of unexpected money that came our way because of the port and the school district and the county being very generous with their slice. So, we can do that without even tapping into our normal distribution share. And so, I would encourage us to do that, and if we were to donate all of the bonus, we get the chief very close to over 15 years of only being down 57,000. And so, I would really like us to consider it out of that. That being said, at some point, Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear from Joe as to his latest risk assessment. I want to help this, the Fire Department. I also don't want to endanger the agreement from the county's point of view. I don't want this unwind tonight and have it go up to Business Oregon, so I want to hear our attorney's assessment if that's likely or not. There is some freedom language in the city's, excuse me, in the county's paperwork that they sent us, where they're delegating to Laura's signature authority, and it speaks specifically to there being room between Canby Fire and the city to work out something different, but I'd like to hear from Joe about that. If there is too much risk in having the agreement with the county unwind, I would encourage us to go ahead, get that done, and then we'll deal with it on the side, talking with Joe about it. We do have the freedom to do what we want with our money after the fact, and we could work that out on the side.
Thanks, Council President Dale, I appreciate that, and Sarah, I'll get to your question here in just a second. Jamie and Joe, again, you know, the walk was through here to Council President Dale's comments about the, you know, we've gone through a series of meetings for the Fire District and the county and the city to come to an agreement, and here we are kind of at the 11th hour before this is going to get approved, and we're kind of, we'll run out of time here. So, if we make changes to the current agreement between the three bodies, what does that do to this agreement? Does it unravel it, and therefore put it back at Business Oregon to make the decision, which we know is they'll just peanut butter it across everyone, and then the, the three, the three bodies here that are trying to get this ironed out will lose out on that, we'll say quote unquote, bonus?
Um, this is Joe, and Tracy Hensley is now joining us. The, this is the 11th hour, the county is of the mind that they don't think that, they think that they, they're putting language in there that would allow for us to mess with our agreement with the Fire District, and it wouldn't impact the county's amount, because they're always going to receive the same amount, but I would say there is finality in accepting the agreement that's in front of you, and with the allowance of, like Tim Dale is saying, being able to allocate how you want in the aftermath, because you can totally trust yourselves in your decision to do that. And so, and it's the same body that can do that in the aftermath. The, the way in which the community service fee is set up is that it has to be spent on the impacts of this particular development. So, it, you know, it's not like you can just go out and give it to just anybody. So, I mean, it does have to be, it has to be impacts that are more than just, you know, above and beyond what the SDCs are. And so, as long as you feel good about those impacts, you know, being, you can adjust for those however you see fit. It is true, if you wait and somehow this deal doesn't go through with the county tomorrow on their consent agenda, then it would be up to Business Oregon, and they could just allocate it probably the way that they would across all the taxing districts, would be the ongoing assumption, and therefore you would miss out on the large S that Tim Dale mentions. So, it would take away your ability to then gift that over. So, it's, I think from just a standpoint of what has been advertised and what has been agreed upon in, over the course of a couple of meetings, the easiest course is to do what is on paper and in the aftermath, make any adjustments you want, because they only affect you.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Council Spoon, do you still have a question?
I do. So, I wanted to express a little bit of frustration in trying to figure out how we get to the end conclusion, because I feel like we had an opportunity to make everyone whole, and we took the path of least resistance as a body in a 4-2 vote, and part of that conversation was that we would make the Fire District whole, and now here we are, a couple of months later, having a conversation about how do we take the path of least resistance with the hope to make the Fire Department whole again, and I'm not, I'm, once again, I refuse to vote against my conscience, so we've, I feel like this is how we've handled this whole issue, is what's the path of least resistance? What's the path of least resistance? And then we're always making accommodations after the fact. The bottom line is, this originally was a bad deal, it's never been a better deal, and here we are again, talking about how we change it at the last minute, and I'm frustrated by that, and I don't know how we change that or how we make it better, but the Fire District deserves to be whole. Frankly, the city deserves to be whole, but we already sold that, like, that, that, that opportunity has already passed us by, and I don't know how we fix it now, but I am frustrated that we're at a point now where what we're talking about is making a vote that none of us actually really like, again, so that after the fact, we can make people whole without a contract, and that, that's incredibly frustrating to me, because we've been talking about this solution for months now, since at least January. And I'm like, I just wanted to let, I just wanted to express my frustration, because we've been talking about this for months, and here we are at the last minute saying, can we actually disagree with what we agreed to and fix it later? And I'm tired of doing that. I don't think that's a good way for government to do business.
So, Sarah, your Council Spoon, I, I hear that, and it, and again, you know, to backtrack on this, you know, this is a, again, the county, the Fire District, and the city came together and went through and negotiated these pieces. So, the deal that is before us is, is, that was agreed upon between the three bodies at one of their meetings that they brought back, and I know that there's been a number of email asks and exchanges about what our thoughts were on this piece, and I don't, I don't know, the only people that I'm aware of that responded to Amanda on this piece were, you know, only a couple of us on this council, you know, and so if we, I understand the frustration about the, the SIZ, but again, you know, you know, to say that we're, we're out money, I mean, are we? I mean, again, I go back to, this was an investment in the community to draw in this, this business, so without this business, there's no money really to be fighting about.
I understand that. We can disagree with that portion all day. The portion I'm frustrated with at this point in time is that when, when the SIZ, when we approved the SIZ in a 4-2 vote, it was under the construct that we would make the Fire Department whole, and here we are talking about the fact that the agreement that's in front of us isn't really entirely fair to the Fire Department, again, after the fact, and I just want to make sure that, so, so do we just approve it as it is and fix it later again? Like, it just feels like poor governance, to be honest. I'm just being, we can, we can agree or disagree about whether the Columbia SIZ was a good choice, but at the time, there were people on the council that said, I'm going to approve the SIZ, and I'm willing, at the time they said, I'm willing to give the entire city's portion over to the Fire Department to make them whole, and this is the agreement that's in front of us, and it still doesn't make the Fire Department whole. And that, that to me is very frustrating, because I feel like, it's been no secret, you can say, like, only so many people responded to the email, I've been very clear out loud in public, if we're going to do this, which I didn't want to do to begin with, we have to make sure the Fire Department's whole, and I'm concerned that we haven't really done that with this agreement, and now we're going to talk about just approving it anyway, because it's the path of least resistance, and then after the fact, we'll try and make them whole? And I just, I just wanted to express my frustration, because I'm not the only person that's frustrated. The city is frustrated, the constituents are frustrated, that this process has been kind of botched and, and frustrating, and it's like on a handshake, right? It's on a handshake for everyone but Columbia, who's on a technicality, and for the rest of us, it's on, it's on a handshake, and I think the taxpayers deserve better, is all I'm saying. I'm frustrated.
Okay. Council Parker, and then Council Varwig.
Well, I've got a question, but first I've got a point of order. This is listed as a discussion item, we're not going to be voting on this tonight?
No, this is, this is just a, it's a consensus of how to move forward. So, the consensus is to, that city staff, basically that we agree with what city staff has presented, and then, and then the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow will include this in their consent agenda for approval. Is that, is that correct, Joe?
Um, this is an item that basically fleshes out, it's a, in a, in a sense, a continuation of the community service fee agreement that you passed before, and it gives the details to how the allocation of the community service fee will go, and in that, Business Oregon and the county were both of the mind that it, it could pass basically with administrative signature. If you guys give a consensus to allowing your administrator to sign off on it, then it will be acceptable to Business Oregon.
Well, let me try and clarify that. So, this is listed as a discussion item, Joe, not a decision item, and I'm a little uncomfortable, I mean, if, if you wanted to have the sense of the council, why didn't we put this on the consent agenda following this? You know, I, I looked at the agenda today, I saw a discussion, Mayor. I didn't see any decision on this. I, I didn't know that we were going to be at a decision point tonight. Do you accept that as being a fair point of issue?
Are you asking me or the mayor?
The mayor. The mayor's responsible for the agenda, and the agenda says this is a discussion item, and now I'm hearing it's this amorphous sense of the council that will be forwarded to the county commissioners as an official statement by this body, and I don't buy that. That's, that's false advertising on our agenda.
I don't know if I have any answer for that, counselor. I, I mean, to me, you know, coming off of, I mean, based on the explanation from Joe, that is this discussion piece, yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Well, then I think we should probably conclude our discussion since we've had it, but if we're going to be making a decision that is forwarded to another governmental body, I want it to be an official action that's recorded with votes, and I want it not to be at a work session. That doesn't seem to be an unreasonable request.
Council Varwig?
Well, I went a different way than I thought I was going to go after that, so I'm just going to withhold my comment for now.
Council President Dale?
A question for Joe. Could, could you reiterate, what is the requirement of council? Is, is this already done administratively and on it goes, because our city representative has signed off on it, or is a positive action needed by the council?
Well, I, there are different schools of thought on this. The Business Oregon school thought was that it could just be administrative action. The council or the county commissioners are clearly putting it on their consent agenda. I have always been of the mind, you know, that, that intergovernmental agreements should be between the government bodies, that there is this gray sort of area that says you have already passed the IGA that created this community service fee, and this is just a further detailing of how that's to be allocated. So, it doesn't necessarily have to even be seen as a third agreement, but, but that you agree that this is how the allocation is going to go. So, you can choose any of those. If you want this to go forward, it has to be by August 22. If you want this to go forward in front of the, the Board of County Commissioners, it has to be that, they will look at it tomorrow if it's passed here tonight, or, or signed off on tonight. So, if you...
As I know, that's very problematic, is that the language you're using, the language you're using is passing, and you can only do that at a business meeting. We can't do that at a work session.
Well, you could give your consensus blessing to this being administratively ushered through, because it is a detailing of an agreement that was already agreed to, and I...
I don't, I don't buy that. I, I think it's...
It's a legal theory, it's one of a couple.
And, and, and I'm saying, as a policymaker, I don't want to be making decisions in work sessions when they aren't posted for that. I think that's the bare minimum, is that if we're going to be taking action, if we're going to be indicating our preference, whatever, and I've never heard this term before, especially in terms of then forwarding that subsequently onto another governmental body, that in 11 years on the council, whenever we wanted to do that, it's, it's during a business meeting, and it's either on the consent agenda, or it's a resolution. But we're, we're creating out of sheer cloth here, this new concept of having a discussion item on a work session, and then it being a representation of the city, and I object to that.
Council Hensley, a comment?
I'm wondering if it would make Councilors Spoon and Parker more comfortable if we conclude our discussion in this work session and move it to new business on the business meeting agenda.
I would be...
The challenge with, the challenge with that is though, is to Council Parker's point, then, that it just becomes new business... that it just becomes new business, meaning then it, does that then later turn into a future agenda item? Right? So it's, that would, so we could bring it there. But then we're looking at it as a September agenda item. And we, we move past this window that we're in.
Can I, can I ask?
Am I understanding that, Joe, in terms of, you know, rules of order here?
Were you asking me about the rules?
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, yeah, we move it to new business. It's still an un-agended item, as Counselor Parker is quantifying.
Again, there's legal theories that say this wasn't a giant surprise and that you discussed it. And it was on the same piece of paper that said you were going to discuss it in a workshop. Technically speaking, sure, you don't have it as an agenda item on your official regular meeting agenda. And so I would say, if you want to pass it, there is a legal theory that I would argue for you, if anybody ever wanted to appeal it, that says this is an administrative rounding off of an agreement you already passed, if you want to go that route. If you do not want to go that route, then you, we will have to wait till the next meeting and time will expire. And then Business Oregon will have their crack.
Counselor Varwig and Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, so that, thanks, Joe, for saying that. That's what I was going to ask is at this point where we're sitting at, if we can't make a decision on this tonight, we have to let it go back to Business Oregon and make a no decision. Because it would have, we'd have to take time, correct? And then at that point, it's going to go back to Business Oregon, who's going to make the decision that's not in favor of what we're talking about tonight. So that, I don't know if we have really a whole lot of options at this point, if we want this to go forward. Otherwise, it's going to go back to Business Oregon, and correct me if I'm wrong. And they'll make a different decision than what we've already agreed to in these previous meetings.
Joe, is that?
Oh, all right. Is accurate.
Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, so you, I appreciate that you say it's not a surprise because we knew this conversation was coming. I'm pretty confident that at least more than just me was not sure that we were just going to be told what was happening. Felt, feel like we don't have a choice. And also there's no time to change anything because we have three days, like the decision's made in three days. So while the conceptually it's not a surprise, it is a surprise because there's no time to course correct. And so that's a frustration for me. My other question would be, now that we've had some further discourse, can we look to Chief and the rest of the people from the fire department to get their thoughts on how they're made whole and just kind of, can, can we get some further input from them on the conversation we've had? Because I feel like they spoke and then now we've had a series of discourse that might, might be, it might benefit us to hear their thoughts on the discourse we've had. And whether or not, and this is my real question, is I want to help not cause harm. So if, if just allowing the current agreement to go through is the best case scenario for the fire department in hopes that we can correct it later, I'm okay with that. If there's concern that from their part or if their, if their hope is that we make a change and we can actively do that and the county will agree with us, I want to do whatever brings the fire department most close to whole. And I'm not sure that any of us on council, like, can do that without their additional input, right? So I, I'm just hoping we can get some more input from them.
Counselor Varwig, then Counselor President Dale?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the current agreement, the way it stands, is an agreement that was presented by the fire department. Am I not right?
That is my understanding. I wasn't at that meeting, but my understanding was they were the ones that actually proposed this.
That's, that's my understanding as well. So this was, this, these numbers were presented to the entire group by C F D.
Yes. And I'm looking at Jamie Stickle, who was present, and she is, is acknowledging, yes, that that was the case.
Counselor President Dale?
Right, so as the calendar runs out and, and the clock runs out on our hour, the tragedy would be to let this get away from us. If that happens, it goes to Business Oregon. Our own, if we have stumbled over ourselves and we let this expire, then Canby Fire will lose out as well because the bonus will evaporate. And so where I am is, let's, it's been administratively signed by the city's rep, by the counties, by Canby Fire. Let it go. Anything else, and we're out of time, and it goes to Business Oregon and we lose, Canby Fire loses. And if we stumbled, we stumbled, but let's not take the fire department down with us, okay?
Thanks, sir. Chief Davis, you were waving your hand back there. Would you like to take a moment?
Thank you. And I just wanted to refer you to the, the county staff report that was moved forward to the city and the fire district and on page two at the very bottom. It does say by delegating and signing the authority of the I G A to accommodate the non-substantive changes, we can be sure that the agreement in place by our statutory deadlines, even if the city and fire district make minor changes or if the county distribution percentage changes prior to execution. Okay? And so that allows the city council to do the fifty fifty. We contact the assessor's office prior to the county meeting. And that's exactly out of the staff report, signed by Sarah Erickson. So, and to answer the question, in the negotiation process, the fire district did ask Amanda, speaking for the city, if she remembered the council's statement about making the fire district whole. And she ignored it. And the fire district agreed to that just simply because we did not want the state to make this decision. And that's the only reason. And that's hence why we sent that information to Amanda, to the mayor, to Tim Dale, to the council, asking for, or asking for some, some support to this. So you can make some administrative changes to this by simply instructing staff to do that and to contact the county and to say, to divide this by fifty fifty. Thank you.
I want to make those changes.
But are we, we're not able to make those decisions in a work session, though?
Can't we come to consensus, but we can't vote? But we could, it could be a new business during our city council meeting so that we can meet the deadline?
Joe, I think that's a question for you, sir.
I, here's the thing, if you wanted to have consensus on, in, in your regular meeting to give marching orders to your administrator, you can do that. Because legally speaking, this didn't, Business Oregon was of the mind that it wouldn't require, because it's a continuation of the earlier agreement, it's just a more detailed version of it, that it wouldn't require having the whole body have to vote on it. That was their legal determination. If you want to accept that they will accept it as an administrative action with, following your consensus, then you can go forth and do that.
So do we need to ask for consensus then to move this forward, however we need to move this forward? Move it forward and make the changes necessary to make Canby Fire as whole as possible? Is that a good consensus then? Or is that, how do we have to say that?
Well, I wouldn't say it that way because I don't know how to define that term. If you, if you want to say the, the fifty fifty split that is being proposed, that's, that's a more specific item. It seems a little open ended to just say as whole as possible.
I just think if we, if we don't move this forward and we lose that bonus, then we've all screwed up.
But someone can make a motion in new business to revisit it and make the adjustment to fifty fifty?
As a continuation, yeah, of, because this is part of your tonight's meeting. It'll be a continuation of the meeting if, because we're running out of time. So if you guys want to start the regular meeting and then continue in, under new business, what was happening in the workshop and do a, if you want to do, try to find consensus at that moment, you can. I mean, I know, I, listen, I'm, I'm saying that there are legally sufficient arguments to say that this is a viable way of doing it. This happens to be because this was given ninety days and then there was three different bodies with three different calendars during a COVID time. And we only had ninety days to do it and you sent who you sent and they have the deal that they have. And now we're sitting here, and I'm sorry, it feels like a short time, but that's how the S I Z is set up. So I, I know it seems like it's this rush and, and it doesn't always feel good to be painted in a corner. So I do apologize for the timing, but the timing is in the statute. We only have ninety days to come to it. And you have three different bodies that all had to meet and negotiate and then have their own respective meetings. So
Joe, so if we make an adjustment to the agenda and add, add in new business and that we continue the community fee conversation at that point in the agenda, we can make a decision at that point on directing staff to potentially dive into a, or let the county know about the, the changes that we come up with.
Yeah, so if, under new business, you just want to talk about it a little bit more?
Well, yeah, because right now we don't have any kind of, one, we don't have consensus on the current agreement based on what I'm hearing. And two, if we're going to make a decision, if we're going to make a change, that decision's got to be made in council, correct?
Well, and let's just do it under, because I was looking at the agenda really quickly. And you have, definitely have mayor's business as a section. You could also bring it back up, Mayor.
I, I, I could.
Well, we don't have a new business section on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, but I can always add it.
Okay.
So, I mean, well, in the, our thirty seconds here before we switch over, I suppose I'll make that decision and make it under mayor's business or make it new business. So.
Thank you, Mayor, for making room for it.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be the case. So we're going to take a quick, do, do people need to take a quick thirty second break or so? And then we'll start the council meeting. I'm seeing that as an affirmative. So we're going to take a quick, we'll say three minutes. And then we'll start the city council meeting. Thanks.